For a separate discussion in action. A is council minutes from the February 23, 16 regular meeting and the February 29, 16 special meeting. B is payment of bills. C financial report for February. D apartments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, but we do have some vacancies on the Board of Appeals and also the Commission on Aging if public out there would like to apply for those positions. E is licenses. We have a request for an extension of the license premises to NYX at 74 North Second Street on May 7 through the 8th. Excuse me. Two is a temporary Class B Retailers License to the Plattville Library Foundation for an event called Loud at the Library. It's a fundraiser on April 15 in the Public Library at 65 South Elm Street. Three is a temporary Class B Retailers License to Jamison Museum Association for an exhibit opening on May 20 in the Mining and Jamison Museums at 385 East Main. And number four is a one-year and two-year operator license to sell or serve alcohol. Those are in your packet. F, two requirements, a banner permit to Delta Sigma Phi alumni for October 10 through the 16th, and a run permit for UW Plattville Health and Human Performance on April 16. And G, we have uncollectible bills and the request is to cancel those for the 2015 budget year. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Citizens comments, observations, and petitions. I have nothing for that. We have some that are asking to speak later on one of the items we'll be talking about. Reports in your packet, Museum Board, Stockhausen?
Nothing to add.
Commission on Aging, Killian?
No additions or minutes.
Historic Preservation Commission, I have nothing to add. Other reports in the packet include the City Attorney itemized report for February, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for February, the Airport Financial Report, also February, and Department Progress Reports. Are there any questions on any of those reports?
Department Progress.
Okay.
First one is for the City Attorney. Can you give us any information about, it says Assistant Police Chief with response to letter from Mr. Source involving potential claim against the city?
There was a notice of circumstance of claim that was filed by a Mr. Source on behalf of the estate of Peter Source, reference the, an incident where the decedent, Mr. Source, was arrested for a traffic violation, and then that case was processed through the court system. A hearing was held, and on the day after the hearing or thereabouts, Mr. Source, the decedent, killed himself. And the estate of Source has filed a notice of circumstance of claim against the city saying that the city is in some, giving notice to the city that there may be a claim filed against the city at some point.
Okay, then the next one you have there is a letter, responded to a letter regarding drainage claim. Any information you give, can you give on that?
I believe it was in the summer of 2015, the, a claim was filed, or, yeah, I guess a claim was filed against the city that was processed through the Sewer and Water Commission, reference some pooling of water in a lawn that the homeowner believed was caused by something the city did or didn't do in connection with making some repairs to...
To lift station.
A lift station. And the Sewer and Water Commission considered that claim and then denied it. And notice of denial was served upon Ms. Schenkel in October, I believe, of last year. And Ms. Schenkel was communicating with me about the steps she needed to take to pursue the claim further.
Okay, the last one I have for you is reviewed loan documents for Roundtree Hall project.
I was, this goes back 15 years. There was a, well, maybe not quite that long. The city made a loan to, of grant funds it received to refurbish the Roundtree, the old college, and make that into apartments. And then some time ago, I want to, I want to say 2007 or so, that, the city was advised that there were additional improvements that need to be made to that project. And so then there was a refinance and some new terms negotiated with respect to that loan the city made to the developer. And I was asked by the city manager to get back into that and find out the nuts, the facts about it, how it was structured, to provide some information about whether there would be proceeds that the city could collect, and how one would determine how much the city might be entitled to receive, and when that note became due and payable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the reports?
Eileen?
Yes.
Please. I, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, but one notice is that both the Community Safe Routes Committee and the Park Forestry and Recreation Committee changed their normal meeting date from the third Monday of this month to the second Monday, which is coming up next week, because the third Monday is during the spring break, and many of the committee members wouldn't be able to attend. So in case anybody has any need or want to investigate or sit in on any of those meetings, it'll be next week and not the third Monday.
Okay. I will back up to citizens comments, observations, and petitions. I should have mentioned that if you do want to speak, we do ask that you fill out this form just because it helps our record keeping. So we do have an individual, Renee, I believe it is, who would like to speak. So Renee, if you would come to the podium and give your name and address, just again for our record keeping, and then we ask you, Eileen, meet yourself to five minutes.
Okay. Renee Guyer with Lori Dresser Real Estate, and my address is 11411 County Road H, Cuba City, Wisconsin. I just wanted to see if it'd be a possibility. I have a client that is interested in purchasing some land by Old Farm &amp; Fleet, and it's my understanding that they're supposed to be city water and sewer, and we wanted to see if we could get approval to put in private well in Septic because of the cost to get the, the water and sewer to that land.
Okay. Howard?
We've been in email contact, and staff is recommending that, that this request go through the Water and Sewer Commission. They'll be meeting next Monday, this coming Monday, and they can review the circumstances and, and make a recommendation at that time. Generally, we don't recommend doing that within the city limits, but there may be circumstances that Ms. Guyer will present to the staff and the Water and Sewer Commission that we, you know, that may give exception to that, but we'll, I, I think it would be best to do it at that point, and if they recommend anything, then they would probably bring that back to the full council.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to also make a note in the Department Progress Reports of public information items from the museum, and remind people that the month of March is the Winter Lyceum Program. The first one was this past Sunday night, and well over 100 people attended. The next one is Sunday, the 13th, and this one is about bicycling somehow.
Okay, thank you. Onto action items. First item, Ordinance 1604, amending the official traffic map for handicap parking stall.
Yes. When, for the duration of this project, of the library block project, the existing library parking lot is closed off, and that's where the designated handicap parking stall for the library was. So staff has designated a temporary handicap parking stall on Elm Street, right in front of the library, right next to the existing curb cut for handicapped individuals to be able to access the library. Staff is recommending the council approve this ordinance to designate this stall for the duration of the library block project.
Motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1604, amending the official traffic map to allow this handicap parking stall.
Second. I have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Barb Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is Ordinance 1605, amending the official traffic ma, map for a five-minute parking space on Mineral Street.
Yes. Also, as part of the library block development, the Southwest Cap Clinic has moved into the old police department area on the northeast corner of City Hall, directly underneath us here. There's a parking stall on Mineral Street in front of the glass doors that is used as their public entrance. They're requesting this space be designated for limited parking, and so we're, we're recommending that this parking stall be designated as a five-minute parking stall similar to the ones on Bonson Street in front of City Hall.
Questions, anyone?
Motion to approve Ordinance 1605, amending the official traffic map to allow the five-minute parking stall on the south side of the West Mineral, of West Mineral Street.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. We'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is the City Attorney contract. Karen?
Since our, our last meeting, Councilwoman Burkilian recommended some changes to the contract, the portion that can change sort of the position description. Those changes were, were fine with city staff, and so you'll notice those edits in the revised report that you received.
Anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve to your contract with Brian McGraw to be Plattville City Attorney.
Second.
We'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next is adoption of the protective covenants for the new portion of the industry park.
Good evening. Eila Kokade here with the Plattville Area Industrial Development Corporation. I'm here to present the protective covenant restrictions regarding the 39-acre parcel addition to the industry park. Are there any questions?
I have one. Now, just to push, wait a minute, before I start talking here, this might not be the portion of the dollar value changing, is it?
That's the second one. For the land price value.
I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt the revised covenants for the new portion of the industry park. This is the 39-acre expansion that was obtained last, in the last couple of years.
Motion and a second. We'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, next item is the adjustment of the land price formula for the 39-acre Plattville Industry Park addition.
So what questions may I answer today?
Okay. I was wondering, since we have an opportunity to increase a little bit of money that we can retain from the sale of those lands, because when we did the, it looks like the incentives were increased quite a bit. If we didn't increase those incentives quite a bit, we could, that would be a little bit more money that we could receive out of the sale of those.
So the past practice and around the state of Wisconsin, what you typically see in industry parks is for the right kind of business, you're willing to give land away for a dollar because ultimately we're going to make that money up in tax base. Now, the way the formula is structured is that originally the land price formula was at 17,500, and that's roughly about 3.8. Now it's at 67,500, which is roughly 3.8 times the amount of the original land price formula. And this reflects the actual costs of improvements as well as the sale of the land per EDA requirements, since we're using EDA monies for it. Now, the reason to up the incentives is because we are doing this calculus in order to promote the right kind of business to come in. So if we were going to get, say, a warehousing firm that was going to have a minimal number of employees, then it puts the onus back on the developer to put a building that has significant improvements in order to get the land for a dollar. Now, that said, if a technology company were to come in, and they weren't going to spend that much of improvements on the building, but they were going to be higher, having high-priced jobs, then we're going to see that impact in terms of the jobs that would be brought to the community. And again, that would be reflected in the tax base and the dollars translated circulating through our community. So what I'd like to stress is that even though it's past practice to give land away for a dollar, in, you see that in Lancaster, you see that in Fennemore, Plattville, we are really playing to our strengths, and unless a company meets these criteria, there have been circumstances where companies do not meet this criteria, and thus they will have to pay the full rate or maybe a reduced rate, but certainly not a dollar. So what you're saying is, is that this land price formula actually represents more of what you are saying, and we're not going to necessarily give land away for a dollar because we have, we have the four-lane highway, we have land with infrastructure, we have a good network here, and I think that's recognized by the business community.
So by, with the job, with the increase for the, the incentives, then that gives, you think that will give us a better handle on how to handle that? Because our incentives before, did we have a problem with what they were? Did we have people go away, or?
We didn't have people going away. We're kind of the best game in town, but that said, we won't just bend over for anyone. So we've had two people or two firms come and look at the same parcel of land. Depending on how, what the improvements were going to look like and the number of jobs, well, it becomes pretty easy, and then we talk about the kind of business that we want in our community. So it gives us, I don't want to say bargaining chip, but it gives us a point to have that conversation in terms of, well, these are the kinds of businesses that work well in our industry park, and if not, maybe we can find another location in the city.
Thank you. I have one little quick one. It's a little bit off the beaten path. When we look at the number of jobs based on dollar values, does the city have somebody that looks at that, or is it done by, is that information kept by the employer that moves into town? Do they monitor their job rates, or how do we know? Do you have a handle on that?
So that's part of my metrics. Karen circulated that she would like goals set for each department and metrics associated with it. So part of that metrics, and I'm glad you bring up that question, is finding out the industry park employees and start benchmarking that data year after year after year, so we can start seeing the increase and the decrease over time, and that can be overlaid with the economy in those particular markets. So we are starting to keep that information in terms of what you're seeing in the jobs that are here and how much impact they have on the community. Well, that tends to be a little bit more of a detailed economic analysis. I think there was one recently done with Southwest Health where UW Extension was talking about, here's the direct effects of all of the folks that are working at the hospital, how much money they're spending in the community, and the jobs that they're supporting in that. And that requires a little bit more detailed economic analysis. But that is something that we could probably do on maybe a three to five year rolling basis, because that's good information.
Thank you. Now, the one other point that I have, I'm sorry, because I don't think I made myself very clear.
You're intellectually curious. That's great.
Some, when we bring, a, a particular example is with the, the cheese factory that we have right now. Okay, they, we're going to have a X number of employees by a certain timeframe. Okay? Now, do they monitor that, or do we also monitor?
We also monitor that. In fact, we won't turn over the land to them after a two-year period to make sure that they've satisfied their, those requirements.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I move that we adopt the land price formula policy as proposed from Pedic.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item is the former pioneer Ford Properties RFP Review Committee. The information in your packet indicates that we had discussed this at a prior council meeting, and, and the idea was to have a committee to review the RFPs. I have had two council members ask me, and so I actually had a third one ask me, but I'd already said yes to the two council members who asked me after the meeting last week or two weeks ago. So Barb Dos and Tom Knoll will be the council members. The two staff members will be Joe Carroll and Karen Kurt, and then the RDA representative will be Larry Ward. So if you need a motion to approve that, committee make up.
Do we want to include a couple other economic development people, do we think? Like, would there be value in having Pedic, for example? Or Main Street, because they're downtown? I just pose that to the group.
It would seem to me that the review committee could call experts, but I don't know that. I mean, that's what I would, I would see that we would call in those types of people for their expertise.
Okay, then I'd strongly encourage it, because it would be nice if we made sure that whatever we, as the city, are discussing fits in, in the plans of the other economic development entities in the community as well.
So if the council feels we should add a couple more entities or just...
Barb, aren't you a member of some of those downtown committees or organizations?
RDA.
Right. So you are a member. So you carry both hats.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I would propose we not add any more people to this committee since Barb is able to represent two different organizations.
But how does that work as a function when you're representing two different facets, when you're supposed to be working maybe for one?
I don't know that it has to be that she's representing one faction or the other. I mean, she obviously serves on both, but...
Oh, then you'd ask that.
She would be the council rep in this case.
So we wouldn't officially have necessarily a Pedic or a Main Street rep at this, or not Pedic, I keep saying Pedic. Yeah, Pedic, I didn't mean Pedic, sorry, guys. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure about Pedic simply because their function is the industrial park.
And economic development broadly, I think.
Economic development broadly, right.
And since it's maybe industry of some sort that we're attracting, they might know things that we don't always know, but...
I think it would be a good, good idea to add one, and Pedic would be a very good one.
It's outside the circle, though.
No, it's not. It's all part of economic development. Doesn't matter which piece of land it is.
Anybody else have an opinion on adding to this RFP?
I don't have a problem with Pedic.
All right, we've, you also said Main Street, is that what you're thinking as well?
Yeah, I was thinking Main Street and Pedic is both do economic development downtown, but I can be persuaded...
Okay, I make a motion that the committee be composed of those seven people, five that you named, plus Pedic and Main Street.
Second.
Okay, I have a couple comments. As far as the functioning of this committee, I assume that they'll make up criteria and that they'll rate each proposal as far as the criteria and give us comments about those criteria. And then, secondly, I'd like to have access to all proposals. I don't necessarily want to have a copy of the proposals, but at least have access to be able to read them. Thank you.
And the other thing I would add is that we had the visioning session with the public, and so certainly I, I'm sure that that will also be considered when we look at the requests for proposals. And, and their task is to review the submitted proposals and make a recommendation to the council regarding the preferred project. So that will be the responsibility of this committee. All right, so we have seven people. We have a motion. Did we get a second?
Yeah, we did. Who was it, though? I had a second on the table. Okay, thanks, Barb.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes, yes.
Motion carried.
Under information and discussion, we have Contract 216 for Furnace, Richard, and Roundtree Street Sanitary Sewer. Howard?
Yes. We opened bids on March 1st, seven bidders. I have included the bid tabulation. I've also included a, a map of the locations of each of the projects and, and a memo from Delta III Engineering regarding the, regarding the bid process and, and everything. The apparent low bidder is Owens Excavating from Hazel Green with a, with a base bid of 610,000 to 1250. We have an alternate bid to extend the water main loop from the Furnace Street water tower over to Market Street for an additional 19,100 with, and including the alternate, it would be 629,315. We'll be recommending award of Contract 216 with the alternate for the total contract price, 629,315. 329,581 is the city portion of it, and 299,73150, if the alternate is included, would be approved by the Water and Sewer Commission for, for their portions of it. Owens Excavating has done a number of projects. I think the last one that they did was West Main Street from College Drive to the West City Limits a couple, three years ago. So we're very comfortable with them as a, as a contractor.
Any questions, anyone?
I, I just have one question. Howard, is the Roundtree Avenue Sewer, sanitary sewer project basically to take sewer from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill? That's kind of a little tiny.
Yes, it is. The, the issue with that is that during, what we didn't realize until the tornado hit was that, that sewer line, when it came from the top of the hill to Business 151, there are portions in there where the sewer line was buried less than a foot underneath the ground. When the tornado came through, some of those trees came up and, and actually crushed the sewer line. Our guys went out and, and did a repair on it, and so now what we're looking at is doing a more permanent replacement of that portion.
How deep are you going to put the sewer line?
Eight or more feet deep, depending on where it is. We'll have to stair-step it, and it will be a very, it will be a relatively steep sewer line. We'll be putting a couple extra manholes in there to stair-step it down.
Any other questions? Okay, then the last item is Appeal of Certificate of Appropriateness Denial. Joe?
Yeah, the property at 130 Market Street is in the downtown historic district. The property owner submitted a certificate of appropriateness request for that property to the Historic Preservation Commission regarding some signage that they'd like to install for the business. The commission approved some of the signage for the property at the rear of the, the building, but they denied the proposed signage at the front of the building facing the park. Basically, they were okay with the, the sign itself. It was the, the proposed location that they had some concerns with. So the applicant, the property owner, has requested an appeal to the council, which is allowed under the ordinance for a decision on that property. So that will be on next time for action. I, I would point out that in the packet, I included basically the initial drawings that the... in the packet, I included basically the initial drawings that the, or I should say, I gave to collect for including in the packet, the initial drawings that went to the commission. The property owners were going to update that, and I think narrow down to what they had. I don't know if that got submitted yet. If it hasn't, that'll be in your packet for next time, with a little bit clearer as to what their request was.
And the property owner has asked to speak, so I think before we have council discussion, I will ask Mr. Haas to come up and.
I'm Jeff Haas, 755 Grant Street here in Platteville. This is Lisa, Lisa Haas, my wife. I present, I went to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting where this was presented, and like Mr. Carroll said, they, they specifically said they didn't have a problem with the sign, just the placement. And at the meeting, they had positions on the porch where we, just exactly opposite of where we placed it, almost every other place on the porch, other than what our choice was. And at, at points, I don't know if you realize what that building looks like, there's not, it's not symmetrical by any means, with the bay windows and such, but at one point, one of the members wanted us to place a sign directly over the entrance, which would have been a problem, and, and then, the next one was put it directly in the middle, because they felt it was symmetrical then. But, like, like I said, they had every other location, other than what our choice was. And it basically seemed that it was becoming a bone of contention. However, Lisa had brought some information, some photos, and wanted to emphasize that she did, when they went through and designed the sign and the placement, they did use the City of Platteville Commercial Historic District signage guidelines. I, this is actually, to be quite honest with you, this is the first time I've seen it, was tonight, and I actually went to the meeting. Nobody had this at the meeting that I know of, but, and no reference was made to this as to why they disapproved this sign placement, just that they didn't like the proper position, or the position of it. Lisa brought some letters, and a letter to speak now.
So, the company that we used to do the sign is Signs to Go. Dan Freeberger is who I worked with for a few weeks on this, kind of going back and forth with this building, which is over 100 years old. We did talk about the weight of the sign, you know, a safe place to hang the sign, you know, not going, needing an egress to hang the sign, being, you know, set back properly, abiding by all the rules of the pamphlet that we were provided by the City of Platteville, that we leafed through and read and highlighted all the place, all the things that we tried to do according to the pamphlet. So, I did get a letter from Dan, you know, stating all of his reasons why he professionally thinks this is where the sign should go for safety reasons, vandalism reasons, conglomerate of things that can kind of happen on Market Street. We also had to consider that it was a one-way street. The sign itself weighs about 150 pounds, and it's five feet tall, five feet wide. So, I did get some recent, I did take a recent picture and have Dan impose it on the building, just to kind of show where the sign would go. So, I don't know if you guys want this now, or if you want it put in your packet. This is actually a current one. The sign, the picture that was taken before, the building was still, you know, under a lot of construction, as it still is now, but it's a little nicer to look at. I also, we're going to put in there some other signs that he's done for the inside of the building. There should be a picture of what they approved for the back of the building, which isn't different at all from what the front of the building is. So, we have to think about a lot of things when hanging the sign. It's going to be a lot of people going in and out of this building. The setback's not far enough for us to put an actual posted sign in the yard, it's just, it's just not appropriate. It can't go on the roof, that's not allowed, would look horrible anyways. Do you have any questions?
Has Joe Carroll received a copy of that photograph?
Not yet.
Okay, so, does anybody want to see it tonight, or you want?
Can you pass it down?
If you want, just pass it down, and then we'll give it back to you, and then we'll.
And did you guys want the letters from Dan stating his reasons on why he'd like?
There's a copy for everybody there.
And did you want to read through the highlighted?
Oh, you made one for everybody?
Yeah.
Just important to note that in the packet that we had originally sent in, there were multiple pictures of the front. This is the one that we presented to, yeah, yeah. I would disregard those photos, and we'll make sure that Joe blows that one up, or, because that is the actual, where we want the placement of the sign. And that's what we presented to the Historicals Commission, we just had a chance to circle that picture for them.
I did put some photographs in here also of, you know, the sign in process, because this is actually a sandblasted sign, it's very historical looking, it's not a metal sign, it's actually a wood sandblasted sign. So, there's some pictures of an actual person standing next to the sign, to be able to see how big this sign is. You can't just take the sign and put it wherever you want to put it, because it's aesthetically pleasing there, you have to consider the weight and size of this sign. And, and, I mean, personally, I don't think my insurance company would like me hanging it over a doorway, being at 150 pounds. I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Any questions from anyone?
My, my question is, will any members of the HBC, the Preservation Commission, be at the meeting? Will they be invited, or just?
Well, it's a public meeting, is that what you mean, this meeting?
No, in two weeks, in two weeks.
Well, yeah, it's, they'll be able to come to the council meeting. We do have one person who's asked to speak from the HBC, so.
And then in two weeks, will the commission members be invited?
It'll be an action item, so they certainly can come, Ken.
Right.
Anything else?
Oh, when you're looking at the pictures, I actually included a sign that Dan, the same sign company made for the inside of the building, so it shows the colors that the sign will be, which is, goes right along with what the historic pamphlet instructs us to do, two, three-colored sign. You know, there's a lot of vandalism that kind of goes on in that area, and I really don't want this sign anywhere that it can be vandalized, it's a very expensive sign. So, some of the suggestions were to be hanging it, where we'd actually need to require an egress from another property owner, and hanging it on a round post, and hanging it in places where it just structurally can't be hung, not on a building of that age, and it just can't. I mean, as far as visibility and things like that go, there's a lot of parked cars there. It's just, it's, there's a lot of obstacles to get around at that property. The sign is in production there, so I just wanted to kind of show you how big it actually, it actually physically is up against a grown man and a child. Those are some sandblasted signs, what a sandblasted sign looks like, some people really don't know what that is.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Can I ask why you already proceeded with the sign before it received appropriate?
So, we got approval on the sign itself, which is placement of the sign.
Why go ahead building this sign before it's met all the criteria?
Well, the sign itself.
And going through all the committees.
The sign itself has, and we have two locations for the sign, so the sign, if I can't get it approved as it is, I'm going to have to hang it in the back, because we did get approval on that. These signs take about three months to make. You know, the Historic Commission only meets once, once a month. When you're talking about opening a business, a sign is probably the most important thing to get people to your business. I do plan on being successful, so I'd like a sign in the front of my building on my opening day.
Actually, there's nothing wrong with the sign itself, far as Barb's question about designing the sign before.
Correct.
The sign is fine, it's just the location of putting it, right?
Right. So, the production wasn't really an issue, I can have the sign produced, I just need to argue where the sign's going to be placed. So, this sign, if I can't, if we can't come to a conclusion as to where we need to put this sign, or we are allowed to put this sign where it's safe, where it's aesthetically pleasing, and all those things, in our opinion, and in two other professional opinions, the contractor and the sign people that have been in business for more than 20 years. I mean, I heavily considered their opinions, this is not my first choice, so.
All right, thank you. We have one other person who's asked to speak. Gary Praska?
Gary Praska and I live at 280 Division Street here in Platteville. I wrote down a few things, just so I don't miss anything, but don't ramble on it. I am speaking as a member of the HBC. The HBC, to have continuity, uses the Secretary of Interior Standards and a number of guidelines to determine approval. I feel that I need to supply and clarify information that is not shown in the minutes of the HPC on January 19th, 2016, concerning 130 Market Street. All members were present, signage was presented at that time, and you, as I suspect, received what the commission received. I haven't seen what you've received, but I suspect you received what we received for approval. You've also seen guidelines for signs. That is one of the guidelines that we use for approval. The commission, after a short discussion, split the signage into two parts. Part one, the back signage and the door vinyl signage, and this part two was the building signage on the front porch. The first had a motion, left after a little discussion, and was approved. Part two was discussed at great length, all members were present, and were all opposed to the option provided, using the guidelines on signage. The sign wasn't the problem, it was the placement. So, in other words, if you've got, if you use that sign, there's specific places to place it. Numerous approved places were given by all members, including Jack Ludkey, he was there at the meeting, he also supplied some possible options. So, there was a number of options, he tried to help. The Guidelines for Approved Signage was adopted by the HPC in 2014. There was problems with placement and the types of sign approval, so to get continuity and to make sure that the approval process was the same all the time, we approved those, those guidelines. The commission gave numerous examples of possible placement that could be approved, the applicant chose not to accept, all members voted, and you've got that in a minute, that it was denial with the options that would be approvable. Unfortunately, you don't have any of those approved options. So, I'm sure you don't, I don't, I don't think you do, at least. But anyway, we even cut the sign out and moved it around on the building to try and get some possibilities that would fit into the guidelines. But anyway, that's the process, and I just wanted to clarify the minutes, because there was no way that you could put everything into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But quickly, Gary, sorry, while you're up there.
Sure.
Can one of you show him the options that we do have? Because we do have an actual page in here.
Oh, we've seen all four of those.
No, in addition, we have another page that says Historic Preservation Commission Suggested Locations with Three Options on it. Can one of you show him? Those are your suggestions, right? We do have them?
Okay, the one, the top one is, I haven't seen the others here. There was numerous ones. The top one, I know, was one of the options.
Okay.
I know one was off to the left and up, one was on a post possible, it wasn't one of those that we favored, yeah, this one was one.
Actually, Gary, the Historic.
There was, there was a number of them that were given, so yes.
Yeah, they were at the street, actually. Historic Preservation Commission Suggested Locations, yep.
And then there was some where we moved around, so those, those are some of the options that were given.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, that concludes our information and discussion. We now have a work session on downtown parking.